Good evening, everyone. We're going to call to order this meeting of the Gallatin City Council for August 7th, 2018. We'll begin the meeting as we do each meeting with the invocation, the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilman Fennell will lead us in the pledge, but first Councilman Mayberry is going to lead us in the invocation. If you'll stand with me, please.
Shall we pray? Gracious God, our heavenly Father, we pause to come around your throne of grace, heavenly Father, giving you the praise and the honor and glory for all the many blessings that we so bountifully receive from you. We thank thee for the blessings of our town, heavenly Father. We thank thee for the blessings of our state. Certainly bless our nation, heavenly Father. May our leaders look to you for wisdom and guidance. Heavenly Father, protect our men and women and our armed services. They protect us locally and around the world. We thank thee, heavenly Father, for life. We thank thee for this meeting tonight, heavenly Father. May thee bless each one here, each one watching, and each person in our town, heavenly Father. Please give us wisdom and guidance and may we learn from the wisdom of the past and never make blunders for foolishness in the future. All these things we ask and pray in the blessed name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Please place the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with labor, dignity, justice, and all.
Now I ask if Ms. Kettrel would call the roll, please. Vice Mayor Overton?
Present.
Mr. Alexander is absent. Mr. Camp?
Present.
Mr. Fennell?
Here.
Mr. Hayes?
Present.
Ms. Love?
Here.
Mr. Mayberry?
Here.
Mayor, we do have a quorum. Okay. There are no minutes provided for your approval this evening. We will move on to public recognition on agenda-related items. Before we do that, I do want to ask this council, I was asked if you all would be amenable to moving the public comments regarding Langley Hall prior to that second reading. Are you guys open with doing that, or? Okay, so we will do that. I'm trying to see what item number that is. There. Uh-huh. So it's right before item number seventeen. So we will do public comment on that then. And also, before we have public comment this evening, I want to remind everyone that we do have public hearings this evening. So if you have comments to make on any of those items, we would ask that you wait and do it under the public hearings. The public hearings, there are three actually on the Westfield development. There are two on the annexation out Hartsville Pike near Airport Road. There are two public hearings on that. There's also a public hearing on amending the zoning ordinance related to murals. And then there's another public hearing about the Miracle Car dealership plan. So if you have comments on any of those items, probably wish to do that under those public hearings. But at this time, we are going to open public recognition for agenda-related items. We'll have a time at the end of the meeting for non-agenda-related items. But this is the time of the meeting where you can come forward and discuss anything that's on the agenda this evening. We ask that you do introduce yourself and give us your address. But I'll say, public recognition on agenda-related items is now open. And you may just come to the podium if you're interested in speaking.
Okay, my name is Johnny Griffin, 657 Northwater Avenue, Gallatin. I'm here today to try to save Randy's Record Shop. Randy Woods did more for this city than anybody that I know of. He sold over five hundred and fifty thousand records. He was the largest mail-order record store in the United States. On every one of his docked records, he could have put Nashville, Tennessee. He put Gallatin, Tennessee. You know, he had a, on the WLAC show, he didn't say from Nashville, Tennessee. He said from Gallatin, Tennessee. You know, he stayed true to his roots because he was from here. And I had a call last night from Ray Walker of the Jordanaires wanting to know anything that he could do to help. He has called Pat Boone in California, and Pat has my number to call me. Last Monday, I called Channel Five News at twelve o'clock. At two thirty, they were here to do an interview. It was on the ten o'clock news. Wednesday, The Tennessean came up and did an interview with me. It was in The Tennessean on Sunday. Thursday, I was in Louisville. Channel Four called me wanting to do an interview. I said, "I'm out of town." They put that interview off till Friday where they could come up here and interview me to get it on the news. It was on the four, five, and six o'clock news. You know, there's a lot of support to save this building. Once you tear it down, there's no putting it back. You know, they're working on 109 here. It's going to extend from forty to sixty-five. You're going to have people traveling there. You know, I'm trying to get, I told a guy the other day that had a restaurant. I said, "I'm not only trying to save Randy's Record Shop. I'm trying to sell hamburgers." He said, "What do you mean by that?" We're going to have, you know, we're sitting here on something that can be one of the biggest tourist booths that this town has ever seen. All of the, a lot of the new artists now, they're not putting them on CD. They've gone back to putting them on vinyl. You know, I talked to several people. There was two historic buildings in this county saved without a dime spent from taxpayers. Gallatin is sitting on something that if we can preserve it, that will pay back several times. You know, I know the building's in bad shape. I didn't, I found out on it on a Thursday. The next Monday's when I started working on this. And like I said, I've had people call me, people come by wanting to donate money. You know, I'm just one guy. I can only do so much. But the way I look at it, that's the most historical building in this town. No, when I was in the service, I don't care which base you went to. As soon as you told them you were from Gallatin, Tennessee, Randy's Record Shop. You can't buy that kind of publicity. He had, they had to expand the post office in Gallatin because of the demand for Randy's records. You know, they're comparing him to Amazon. You know, when you're from Gallatin, Tennessee, in the fifties, and you're selling five hundred and fifty thousand records a year, nobody could compete with that. What I'm saying, this man thought enough of this town. He wasn't selfish. You know, he gave everything he had to this town. He advertised everything. And I think his legacy deserves for that building to be saved. You know, I'm not in construction. I don't know how to save it. I know that if there's any way we can put that off, as much interest as it is on that building, we can save it. So I want you to, you know, if you tear it down, you can put all the markers you want down there. There's a marker up here in town says Randy's Record Shop. How many people have you seen come to town to walk over and look at that marker? None. You can put a memorial down there. What do you have? You have a rock that says Randy's Record Shop. You know, they're wanting to see Randy's Record Shop. I mean, it's amazing the amount of interest. I mean, you wouldn't believe the people that have called me and want to donate on this, you know. We need, like I said, I've done everything I know to do. I've worked on this day and night for over a week, and I've accomplished, I think, quite a bit. But due to the fact that people know how historical that is. So please, whatever you do, don't let them tear it down because if it's gone, you know, we're sunk. And I thank you for listening to me.
Hey Johnny, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Have you, have you been in touch with the family that owns the building or the property?
I can't get the number. I talked with the company that's property management, and he has given the lady my number. You know, I've talked with the mayor on this. I don't know the procedure you go through to save this because I don't know anything about that. All I know is, like I said, I grew up in this town. I'll be seventy years old in November. I had the paper out around the square. I delivered down Nashville Pike to Lockport Road. I delivered the paper to Randy's Record Shop. When you got out of school every day, everybody went, if you had any money at all, you went to Randy's Record Shop. And these people in this town do not want to see it torn down. You know, they put it on Facebook. It's, you know, it's everywhere. And people have commented, "Please don't let them tear it down." You know, I said, "I'm doing all I can do." You know, it's in y'all's hands to help me. You know, I don't know anything else I can do. Like I said, when I have Pat Boone and Ray Walker from Jordanaires calling me at home, offering to give us assistance, do you know what a draw that would be for this town? You know, they could have, like you have the deals uptown. You could have a Randy Wood Day, one day a year. Have a car show, you know, have booths up on the square. Do you know the amount of people would come here? All the people go to CMA in Nashville from all over the world. They would drive twenty minutes to Gallatin, Tennessee. But we've got to have it here for them to do it. You know, you go on the interstate, you go in a rest area. They have little brochures. If you go toward Memphis, you can see where any country artist or anything. And they've got, well, they'll drive to a little nut bush down there. They'll drive to Nut Bush, which is nothing. You don't think they're not going to drive twenty minutes from Nashville up here? Like I said, it could be opened back up as a souvenir shop, records. You know, it would pay for itself, I believe, if we could just get the building back where, you know, where it used to be. When you've got all these new artists, going back to vinyl, I've been told that you get better sound, and I don't know how it can be, off a vinyl record than you can a CD. You know, a lot of the artists, they love those vinyl records. And we're sitting here where the world's largest mail-order record store was. And if I can't save it, it's going to be tore down. You know, we need help. Y'all need to really, really think on this. It would be, you can't buy in money the advertisement that this would do for Gallatin. And if we can preserve it, it's not going to cost you anything. You know, I mean, I have grandchildren. I want their children to be able, you know, to go down there. You know, and like I said, this is nothing for me. I don't get a damn out of this. I don't want anything out of it. All I'm doing is trying to save it. And I really need y'all to help me do this. I think you need to really think about it because if you tear it down, it's gone. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. Anyone else wishing to speak under public comment on agenda-related items this evening? For anyone who came in late, we are going to put Langley Hall right before item number seventeen, public comment. Okay, seeing no one, I'm going to declare public recognition on agenda-related items closed. And move on now to Mayor's comments. First of all, I do want to mention Power on the Water is coming up. That's coming up quickly. You can still buy tickets. Make sure that you do that. Also, I want to mention that the Miracle Park fundraising is underway, and I took this T-shirt as an advertisement. T-shirts are for sale through Gallatin Parks and Recreation. They have a great assortment of materials and colors, and they would love to sell you ones who raise funds for that park. Want to acknowledge a very important honor that was received by one of our department heads. Our police chief, Mr. Donald Bandy, was named the Police Chief of the Year by the Tennessee Association of Chiefs of Police. So big congratulations, Chief Bandy. And very excited that the Gallatin Fire Department has received the Safer Grant. It's good news. So I think that is it under Mayor's comments. You do have a list of events coming up. Things that are continuing, trying to see if there's anything. Third Thursday in May, and the next one will be on the sixteenth of August. And then you'll see that you have some ribbon cuttings, the car show, event at the airport, that kind of thing. But I won't go through the whole entire list. That would be it under Mayor's comments. And then we'll move ahead into the regular agenda. And the first item on the regular agenda is the 321 West Main Street imminent danger, dangerous building complaint and show cause hearing. And for that, we're going to ask Mr. Stewart to come forward. And Ms. Haime-Cali will be conducting this.
Yeah.
Thank you, Councilor.
Mr. Stewart, you kind of know this process. So if you'll just kind of give your name and title and the property address that we're talking about.
My name is Chuck Stewart. I'm the director of the code department building official for the city of Gallatin. The property in question is address 321 West Main Street. Due to a citizen's call in, we went to the building and found the building had collapsed. The roof had collapsed. The building was addressed as an imminent danger due to the adjacent buildings which are actively being used and actively occupied. It's considered unsafe building. The floor joists broken, missing, water damage. Ceiling joists broken, missing, water damage. Roof rafter's broken, missing, water damage. Roof decking broken, missing, water damage. The roof, as they built up, it is broken, missing. The size of the collapse has increased since the building was originally posted. The block walls are, and foundation walls are all broken, missing, cracking. The backside, the creek has caused some damage to the building. We consider this an eminently dangerous building for collapse. If the walls were to fall outward, we have a barber shop and another occupied building there that share a common wall. I have been speaking with the owner of the building. The owner cannot be here tonight due to an illness. His representative, his daughter, called me this afternoon. Her intentions are to have the building demoed, and she thought that she would have it in progress already. But she's still waiting on bids. It's the nature of the business here in middle Tennessee. Getting contractors who are already scheduled out onto projects is hard for her. I briefed her on our process and choose the way we do things. If you move this, adopt this resolution, then the city council and the attorney would take over this process from here on. And she would, my best guess is what I told her, she'd probably have at least fifteen days. But if she gets a contractor in place, she's going on with the demolition.
And can you tell the council, just so everyone is aware, do you know the name of the owner?
I don't have his name. Her name is Ms. Sherry Mullins, and she is in Houston, Texas. The owner of the building is, I believe, in rehab at this moment in Memphis, and he doesn't get out. He's had multiple problems. He's elderly and had multiple issues going on at the same time.
I believe his name is Charles Smith, just for the record, and he resides in Memphis. And to your knowledge, the show cause order and the complaint were both served by certified mail and accepted, correct?
That's correct.
And they have acknowledged receipt of acceptance of that complaint?
They have, and we also sent them all the pictures that we had in our possession.
And this building is different from other buildings that you've brought to this council in the past because you have deemed this one to be eminently dangerous. So it's a different section of the code than what the council is accustomed to working with. And can you tell them why you believe it's an imminent danger to the life and safety of people?
Let me tell you what the code says, and then I'll tell you what I see in the building. It says, "When the opinion of the code official is imminent danger of failure or collapse of a building or structure that endangers life, or when any structure or part of a structure has fallen and life is endangered by the occupation of the structure or someone in close proximity which is the building's adjacent." Okay, that is an eminently dangerous building. This building, I'm assuming a lot of you have probably looked at the photos online, the internet photos of how that building was constructed. It was, the building was there, and they built a new building around it. Then they removed the existing building that was inside. Due to neglect over the years, deterioration. Prior to my time here, there was a Hispanic grocery store there. They removed support structures inside the building that helped hold that roof. And the way that wall locks together, and if you look at the back, I'm going to tell you the east corner of the building, you'll see where the wall is separated there to approximately two, two and a half inch crack that goes upside the building where the corner is leaving the building. The front of the building locks in in a block locking method with brick exterior on the facade there. The only thing holding that building up right now is mortar. The support structures through the middle of the building are gone. So the walls are basically freestanding and are locked on the corners. And in my opinion, a flat wind, we're going to start losing the building.
And I know that you've told us that the owner is not present, but to ensure that we're following proper process, I want to ask if the owner or a representative of the owner is present, if you would please come forward at this time. Is there any other testimony you think you need to give this council for them to make an informed decision?
I have the inspector that was, did the preliminary inspection, the first inspection on site here. If you'd like to ask him anything. He filled out this report I just read you with everything in here. Two of the demo contractors that she has called in to give her an estimate have called us, and we've met them on site. One of them went up inside the building, and he said, "This is a little scary to me." The wall that is a common wall between what we consider the barber shop and this building would have to be removed piece by piece. You couldn't come in with a wrecking equipment and tear it down because that wall, to maintain the integrity of the building adjacent to it, is going to be taken down. Then a contractor would have to come in and tie that all back together and waterproof it for the building next door. And the owner's been made aware of that.
Is there any other testimony that you have?
None.
Okay. Mr. Stewart has given his testimony on why he believes it's an imminent danger to the life and safety of persons. This council must now determine what you want to do with that building. Again, the owner has had contact. We have contacted the owner. They were not able to be here tonight. They have made contact with our codes official.
I'll add one thing, if I may. I have spoken with the owner on a couple of occasions. I've tried to explain the importance of this building to the city. I suggested so that the city wasn't the sole determinant, or determine, the sole determining entity, that she contract, contact an independent construction company or inspector or whomever she may wish. She told, what'd she tell, I haven't spoke, yeah, I have spoken to her since then, but you might want to say what it was she told you after doing that.
Yeah, there was a, one of our local contractors here went out and looked at the building, and he did not see any way to salvage the building. And evidently, she has spoken to him that he didn't see any way to salvage it.
Because I didn't want the city to be the ones that tore down the building.
This is not a city building. This is an owner building that we're, we would tag a building as a dangerous building. The owner of the building then has the opportunity to either repair the building and bring it back into condition or to demo it. And they're going to pick the one that is probably the least expensive to them. You know, that's normally what happens.
And I did tell the owner too, you know, that there was a lot of interest in preserving the building and, you know, would they be willing to sell it? She gave me a price that was beyond anything that I think anybody would be willing to do. And a lot of people don't understand that that 321 through 331, I think,
Yeah.
are all owned by the same property owner, and so they only want to sell it as an entire group.
That's correct.
Do you understand, the lady understand the historical significance of this building?
Yes.
And the lady, the owner or her father, they want to demo the building. They want to tear it down?
Well, she is the spokesperson for the family now because of his health condition. And just speaking frankly, she doesn't want to fool with it.
Suzie being a private owner like that, she wants to tear it down, she can tear it down, can't she?
Yeah, there's, there would be nothing that the city could do. If she came in tomorrow and tore the building down, we don't have an interest in that building. It's the owner's interest.
It appears we don't have a choice. I mean, I think we're going to have to move it on, really, to be honest with you, so.
Yeah, and also, I will say this, that asbestos has been identified in the building. There would be an asbestos survey done and remediation for that.
I think everybody up here understands the importance of Randy's Record Shop to Gallatin and what could, it could mean to us, but I think that the owner should have started trying to preserve that years ago. Now, in your opinion, too, you know, the independent contractor said it's not salvageable. Is it the same in your opinion? And also, would it be at all, would it be too dangerous to leave for another two weeks or amount of time for these people to try to get something worked out?
Can I answer just part of that? You have to give the owner fifteen days per our ordinance. So we would, the owner has to have at least fifteen days.
And to answer your second question, I can't answer that question. I can't tell you that tomorrow I might have a thunderstorm with fifty mile an hour flat winds on a wall that has no support. I have a lot of years in the construction industry. I concur with the independent contractor here locally, who is a valuable member of our community, that that building is not a salvageable building.
Mayor, I'll make a motion. We declare this building an imminent danger building.
Second. And there's a motion by Vice Mayor Overton. There is a second by Councilman Hayes. Any further discussion?
Just one quick thing. Chuck, just suppose the lady's got fifteen days to, somebody like Mr. Johnny wants to buy the building. Say if he turn around and bought it within fifteen days of when the lady, they're going to start tearing this building down, would there be a permit available for somebody to be able to go in there and try to rehab this building? Or is it so dangerous a permit wouldn't be given?
No, a permit can be issued, but it would take an engineer of record on the building and a plan, a plan design of how they're going to salvage that building and keep it, okay? Now, we did go back as far as 2010 digging on that building, and we found that there was about three feet to three and a half feet of water in the building in 2010. So if you look at the pictures and the photographs that's on file from the floodwater here, you can see exactly where the water was there.
Mayor, I don't think anybody on this council wants to tear that building down, but I don't think we have any choice. I, for one, been here my entire life, and I know what, how important this building is to the city of Gallatin. But I don't think we have any choice for what our codes director and our building officials telling us. I don't think we have any choice but to do what we're doing.
And I think Mr. Stewart knows this. If I'll tell the council as well, that in my conversation with Ms. Mullins, I did tell her too that the city would be interested in the brick from the building for a potential future memorial or something.
She did mention that this afternoon in the conversation. She has spoken with you about that, and one of the contractors said that he could remove the brick. He said, "I mean, I can get it all, but I can get a lot of it."
That's nice. Thank you.
That's what's brought to the table today.
I just have one question for Susan, really. If the owner at this time would have fifteen days, right? So if during that time, the money was come up with to purchase it, and they were able to, would that be an additional fifteen days added on after?
It's whatever this council decides in your motion. Right now, the motion was that it was an imminent danger, and under our ordinance, they have fifteen days. If this council wants to do otherwise, you can amend that motion if you think that it's safe for the adjoining buildings.
I guess what I'm asking is if it's, if there's a new owner, do we also give that new owner fifteen days on top of it?
No, you're making a decision tonight for the building regardless of the owner. Now, you know, it's not to say that they can't ask for a special call meeting for something to happen. That would have to happen very quickly, and you'd have to consider, you know, the safety of the people in the adjoining buildings.
I'm a little nervous that those people shouldn't even be in those adjoining buildings right now.
We have spoke with them. We have had two meetings with the people out there and advised them what we thought. We don't have the right to tell them to leave that building. We have cordoned off, and I've talked to Zach in Public Works this afternoon to go out and increase the barriers there. The one person that we're really concerned about would be the barber shop because of his close proximity. because of his close proximity to them, you know. But we have a procedure we have to go by and we have these days that we have to do, whether we like it or not, that's what we have to do. The barber shop and the other, it's fine, but that wall is an adjoining wall. So that roof still ties into it. It's what's above the barber shop that is the issue there.
Because that, if you think about where it looks like, that Randy's Records above the others.
Yeah, you have a wall like this and you have a ceiling ties into it. This is the wall, this wall above the barber shop and barber shop sitting under this roof here. So that's the one that would be a concern more than the other portion of the building.
And Mr. Stewart, I think that when we spoke this afternoon, you might want to inform council of this, that you told me that since you went out there initially and looked at it, the building has deteriorated further.
Yes, it has, it's deteriorated. The hole has enlarged in the roof, more of the roof has failed. And if you're coming west to east, coming down Nashville Pike and you look to the right side, which is above that barber shop, you'll see that wall appears, the cracks in the wall are increasing. And we've got four days of forecasted rain coming in here, so. That's my staff and I's opinion that that building is imminently dangerous.
By next Tuesday night, if the owner hasn't started any progress down there, could you just give us an update? If you have any additional information on the progress of this thing?
Be happy to.
It's deteriorating every hour, it seems like. And then if Johnny has any updated salvageable information, his communication from the people that he's discussed with, he welcome to certainly share that with the council next Tuesday night.
Or any interested parties, yeah.
Or any interested parties.
Yeah.
Wait just a moment. Will the council amend the rules to allow him to come forward and make a statement? If you want to speak, can you come to the microphone, please?
We've already got a motion and a second on the floor. Counsel is discussing now.
It's my understanding that she has had two contractors look at it to tear it down. One guy wouldn't even do it. The other guy wanted a million dollars.
Okay, well, I'm not sure that that's going to be accurate.
Okay, so you see what I'm saying? I don't think this lady-
Well, thank you, Mr. Griffin.
-is going to tear that down.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Griffin. So back to any further discussion on this? Okay, with none, we will proceed with a vote to determine 321 West Main Street an imminent danger and a dangerous building. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, please say no. It is unanimously passed. We move now to public, thank you, Mr. Stewart. We move now to public hearing on Resolution R 1807-44. Councilman Hayes, you're recognized.
Yeah, this is a public hearing. A resolution of the City of Gallatin, Tennessee, adopting a plan of service for the annexation of three parcels, let's see, and consisting of 122.79 acres located east of Big Station Camp Boulevard, north of Lakeland Drive and south of CSX Railroad and providing for an effective date. This is a public hearing.
Okay, public hearing is now open on Resolution R 1807-44. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward at this time. Seeing no one indicating that they wish to speak, I will declare public hearing closed. Onto item three, which is public hearing on Resolution R 1807-45. Councilman Hayes.
Yes, public hearing. It's a resolution of the City of Gallatin, Tennessee, annexing three parcels consisting of 122.79 acres located east of Big Station Camp Boulevard, north of Lakeland Drive and south of the CSX Railroad into the city of Gallatin, Tennessee. Authorizing the annexed parcels to be indicated on official zoning atlas. Authorizing assignment of the annexed area to Council District Four. Repealing conflicting ordinances and providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
Okay, public hearing on Resolution R 1807-45 is open. Come forward at this time if you wish to speak. And no one's jumping to their feet. I will declare the public hearing closed. Item four, public hearing, ordinance number 01807-32. Councilman Hayes.
Yeah, this is an ordinance of the City of Gallatin, Tennessee, rezoning 122.79 acres from the A Agricultural Residential District to the R8 Medium Density Residential Planned Residential Development District, 48.657 acres. The R6 High Density Residential Planned Residential Development District, 33.795 acres. Mixed Juice District, 33.57 acres into the PGC Planned General Commercial District, 6.751 acres. With a preliminary master development plan for Westfield. Authorizing the revision to be indicated on the official zoning atlas. Repelling conflicting ordinances, providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
Okay, this is public hearing on 01807-32. Anyone wishing to speak? Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Item number five is public hearing on Resolution R 1807-46. Councilwoman Love.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution of the City of Gallatin, adopting a plan of services for the annexation of a 2.31 acre lot located east of Airport Road and north of Hartswell Pike and providing for an effective date. This is a public hearing.
Okay, public hearing on R 1807-46 is now open. Anyone wishing to speak may come forward. Okay, only see people leaving, so I will declare public hearing closed. Item six is public hearing on Resolution R 1807-47. Councilwoman Love.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution of the City of Gallatin, annexing a 2.31 acre lot located east of Airport Road and north of Hartswell Pike in the city of Gallatin. Authorizing the annexed property to be indicated on the official zoning atlas. Authorizing the assignment of the annexed area into a council district. Repelling conflicting ordinances, providing for severability and providing for an effective date. This is public hearing.
Public hearing on Resolution R 1807-47. Anyone wishes to speak, they may come forward at this time. Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Item seven is public hearing on ordinance 01807-35. Vice Mayor Overton.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance of the City of Gallatin, Southern County, Tennessee. Amending zoning ordinance Article 13 Performance and Design Standards. And it's got to do with mural images on our buildings and public hearing.
Okay, this is public hearing on ordinance 01807-35. Anyone wishing to speak may come forward at this time. Seeing no one, I'll declare public hearing closed. Item eight is public hearing on ordinance 01807-36. Councilman Hayes.
Yeah, this is an ordinance of the City of Gallatin, Tennessee, rezoning a 3.09 acre parcel from the R20 Low Density Residential District to the PGC Planned General Commercial District and approving a preliminary master development plan for the Miracle Car Dealership. This is a public hearing.
Public hearing on ordinance 01807-36 is now open. Anyone wishing to speak? Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Now we'll move on to an item. This is third reading on ordinance 01709-71. Vice Mayor Overton is recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an amendment in Article 3, Section 1 of the City of Gallatin, Tennessee Charter and established in Charter 67 Private Acts in 1953. It's amended there too to establish the term limits for the office of mayor, district alderman and alderman-at-large, initiative to be able to put it on the ballot on November the 6th for the citizens of Gallatin to be able to vote on term limits for the city council and the mayor. And I so moved.
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Overton, second by Councilman Hayes. Is that right? All right. So I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, this is third reading on ordinance 01709-71. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Okay, I have two noes. Councilwoman Love and Councilman Mayberry voting against. It does pass five to two. Item number 10 is second reading on ordinance 01807-33. Councilman Alexander.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance appropriating insurance recovery in the amount of $2,247.31 from the unassigned fund balance of the general fund in the damage of a head wall. It leaves Lang and Donaghy. And I so move.
Motion by Councilman Alexander, second by Councilman Fennell. Is there any discussion? This is second reading on ordinance 01807-33. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, say no. Does pass unanimously. Item 11 is second reading on ordinance 01807-34. Councilman Fennell.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance of the City of Gallatin, amending the municipal code of the City of Gallatin, amending Chapter 5 Building and Building Regulations by adding Article 16 titled Murals and Images and amending Chapter 12 Miscellaneous Offenses, Section 12-2 repealing conflicting ordinances, providing for severability and providing for effective date. And I so move.
I have a motion by Councilman Fennell, a second by Councilman Alexander. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. McCord. Does this need to be amended to provide that this is Article 15 instead of Article 16? Where's there a typo in this?
Yes, ma'am. It should be changed from 16 to 15.
Okay, so if someone would make an amendment to that of it? Okay, motion by Councilman Alexander to amend, a second by Vice Mayor Overton to amend. Any discussion on the amendment? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Okay, the amendment passes unanimously, which takes us back to the original motion. Is there any discussion on it? Okay, this is going to be second reading on the ordinance 01807-34. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. The motion is approved six to one. Or the ordinance is approved six to one. Item number 12 is second reading on ordinance 01807-37 and Councilman Alexander is recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance appropriating $30,000 for filing the water fest when I so move.
Okay, that's a motion by Councilman Alexander, second by Councilman Fennell. Is that right? You second, I'm sorry, Councilman Hayes. Okay, motion by Councilman Alexander, second by Councilman Hayes. Is there any discussion? This is second reading on ordinance 01807-37. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed, please say no. Is approved unanimously. Item 13 is second reading on ordinance 01807-38. Councilman Mayberry.
Yes, ma'am. This is an ordinance appropriating additional funds in the amount of $307,000 for road projects and correcting prior allocation of the 2016 bond fund. And those allocations are as follow. Drivers Lane, Nichols Lane realignment, it's $118,000 of it. Airport Road Turn Lane at Gateway Drive, $152,000 of it. And Airport Road and Coles Ferry intersection is the remaining $37,000. Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilman Mayberry, a second by Councilman Alexander. Is there any discussion? Okay, this is second reading on ordinance 01807-38. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Does pass unanimously. Item 14 is first reading on ordinance 01807-39 and Councilman Mayberry is recognized.
This is an ordinance waiving tap fees on behalf of Habitat for Humanity. The location of the property is 713 Pace Street in Gallatin. Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilman Mayberry, a second by Councilman Alexander. Is there any discussion? Okay, this is first reading on ordinance 01807-39. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Does pass unanimously. Item number 15 is Resolution R 1712-64. Councilman Camp.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution of the City of Gallatin, Southern County, Tennessee, adopting a plan of services for the annexation of a portion of one parcel, tax map 134, parcel 001.03, consisting of 28.62 acres and providing for effective date. So moved.
Okay, motion by Councilman Camp, second by Vice Mayor Overton. Any discussion on this? Okay, this is Resolution R 1712-64. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
Okay, I have five to. Thank you, Councilman Alexander, with Mr. Mayberry and Ms. Love voting against.
Mayor, clarify that who the two noes were.
Ms. Love and Mr. Mayberry.
Okay.
So we'll move on to Resolutions R 1712-65 and Councilman Camp is recognized again.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution of the City of Gallatin, Southern County, Tennessee, annexing one parcel, tax map 132, parcel 001.03, comprising approximately 28.62 acres located on the north and east of Coles Ferry Road into the city of Gallatin. Authorizing an annexed parcel to be indicated on official zoning atlas. Authorizing assignments of annexed area to a council district. Repelling conflicting ordinances, providing for severability and providing for effective date. So moved.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, but I have totally messed up because we did commit to letting them have a public hearing on Langley Hall prior to this, prior to these. And I had looked at it and just seen the full acreage at item number 18. And so can we suspend at this point and invite those who wish to speak to come forward? Huh, thank you. Motion by Councilman Fennell, second by Councilwoman Love. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, okay. Folks, I apologize. That's what happens when I do things that we don't typically do. But at this time, we will open the floor up for anyone who wants to discuss their concerns regarding Langley Hall. As we're calling it, but.
Stan Carver, 104 Blue Water Drive here in Gallatin, representing Hagueness. Sounds like a broken record almost, doesn't it? This project has been discussed at this level for a solid 11 months now. Industry and the residents of Coles Ferry and Woodvale have consistently been at each meeting and appealed to your common sense during the long period to not approve this project as presented. 24 acres of this 77 acre site has been zoned industrial for more than 40 years. There are 11 industries and businesses that have located between Coles Ferry Road and Steam Plant Road and the Airport Road Industrial Corridor as a result of zoning that is created by the city 40 years ago. What has changed at the council level today that now says that homes built on the affected 24 acres are compatible with industry? And we're only talking about the 24 acres out of the total 77 that's presently zoned industrial. Nothing has changed in the minds of industry that took the city at its word 40 years ago that these 24 acres would remain industrial. You're setting yourselves up for continual complaints of noise, dust, traffic and lighting 24/7. You have some responsibility morally and ethically to protect those potential homeowners who would buy those homes in this 24 acre site. You could say, and we have heard some of you say, that these potential homeowners should know better. Buying a home next to the largest manufacturing plant in the area. But why would you put a citizen in that dilemma when you can do something about it tonight if you vote to turn this project down? We would think that the council should represent the best interest of the many existing residents in the existing industry as opposed to the profits of a few. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carver.
Robert Brown, 504 Coles Ferry Road. Mr. Carver pretty well touched it all. I don't have too much left. But I would like to say, we've all, we've been talking for a year about the flooding and about the roads. Just the other night, I was reading Sunday Tennessee and about Randy's Record Shop. And I ran the part that the planning commissioner said, let me quote. "The department discourages construction on areas zoned as a special flood hazard, meaning areas with one in four chances of flooding over 30 years." Well, we have documented proof that Langley Hall has flooded since 1978 and probably before that. Had a major flood in 2010 and then just one in December 2017. So where's the, what did the planner didn't help us out a bit when we were talking about that? We've talked about the roads, 18-foot roads. They said it was going to do a traffic study. And this has been a year ago. No traffic study yet. And this rock wall. In a recent meeting, Green Design stated that if this ordinance fails, they could do what they wanted to do. The house and the rock wall will be torn down. That's kind of sounded like- The house and the rock wall will be torn down. That's kind of sounded like blackmail to me. Another thing's been coming up, members of this council has kept on and on, intending that PUD housing is the best for our community, for the council can control it and they can do, and that they, and that people who live out on Coles Ferry Road won't like the alternative. I had something on zoning, but Mr. Carver covered all of that. Last thing I'd like to say, Gallatin Planning Council has heard this ordinance, not once but twice, over the last 10 months. They have overwhelmingly voted or rejected each time. An old vote is recommended for this ordinance. It will save this beautiful property in Langley Hall, and I believe better things will happen to it, something that everybody can be proud of. Thank you.
Whoops, thank you, Mr. Brown. Anyone else wishing to speak on this? I see no one indicating that they wish to speak, so we will close public comments on these developments, and we will go back to resolution R1712-65. We do have a motion and a second on that. So is there any discussion? Sixteen, we're on sixteen, resolution R1712-65. Okay, seeing none. All those in favor of resolution R1712-65, please say aye. Opposed, please say no. Does pass. Oh, I'm so, 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 sorry. No, Councilwoman Love, Councilman Mayberry. Five to two, it is passed. Pardon me, I've been spending time with Red Todd in Florida. Item number 17, the second reading on ordinance 01711-95, Councilman Camp.
Thank you, ma'am. This is an ordinance of the City of Gallatin, Southern County, Tennessee, resoning two parcels totaling approximately 77.43 acres from industrial restrictive, industrial general, R15 medium-density residential, and R20 low-density residences districts to R15 medium-density residential plan, residential development, which is approved. This district in approval of preliminary master development for Langley Estates, located on the east and north of Coles Ferry Road, authorized for the revision to be indicated on official zoning analysis, repealing conflicting notices, provided for severability, and provided for effective date. So moved.
Motion by Councilman Camp, second by Vice Mayor Overton, and Vice Mayor Overton desires to be recognized.
Ma'am, I'd like to make a amendment on this. First of all, I need to ask Mr. McCord a question. If you'll come up, please. Mr. McCord, is it that we still need to strike Exhibit D, item number nine? Do we still need to amend and strike that out?
Well, that, that certainly is something that needs to be removed, whichever option you like to go with, whether it's the option with the plan that's part of Exhibit D, or if you want another plan, keep in mind that there were several that were presented.
I'm going to present, my amendment's going to be that we go with the Plan B that was up there the night, that leaves 380 feet away from the, on the boundary.
Is that the one with the, the big buffer?
Yes, that's 380 feet, that's correct. And that we strike Exhibit D, item number nine. Both of those would be amendments. And I so move.
Okay, motion by Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor Overton to amend.
The Plan B, I think it's B, wasn't it, Mr. McCord?
B, Exhibit D, number nine, is, we recommended to eliminate that one, it's no longer necessary.
And insert Plan B.
And then the first, first portion of item number eight also be stricken, and we probably could strike all of the action, item number eight, now that y'all have adopted the resolution of annexation.
You're going to need to clarify your motion to reflect that.
Mr. McCord, clarify the plan that we're, that I'm speaking of.
The plan, the plan that I believe you're speaking of is one that has a two, 375, 380-foot wide buffer, which would remain zoned industrial.
That's correct.
As it is. It would reduce the number of lots to 148.
You clarify that on record, which plan it is.
Yes, we'll make that correction at the description of the plan.
Yes, sir, Exhibit D, number eight and nine also.
Okay.
And that's, that's in my amendment.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Overton, amending the original ordinance, a second by Councilman Alexander. Any discussion on that amendment?
Yeah, not, well, just, I mean, it's overall. Can I ask Bill a couple questions while he's up there?
Uh, yeah, I mean, we're going to keep him up here, but do you want to?
Go ahead.
Go ahead with the amendment first. Okay, all in favor of the amendment, please say aye. Opposed, please say no. Okay, the amendment is approved unanimously.
No.
Okay, one no?
I just need to ask a clarification on this. Boy, Jimmy, may I?
Let me first clarify what the vote was on that.
It's either going to be six one or five two.
I'm not sure what we're even voting.
His amendment.
Yeah, you do.
My amendment is seven.
I see Exit D, I don't see B.
No, D, eight and nine.
Eight and nine.
I thought you said something about B.
Plan B that he had on the, on the board at the committee meeting.
I remember it being on the board. I don't remember exactly how much that buffer was.
Three hundred, what is it, Mr. McCord?
It's roughly about 375 to 380 feet.
Seventy-five, 380 feet.
Okay. Are we still kind of discussing since that vote really hadn't actually been?
Well, the vote, I thought, did happen.
Okay.
But I still haven't determined how you voted, was my problem.
I'd vote no on it.
Okay, so that would make it six one, Ms. Kitchell.
So now we're discussing.
Yes, now we're back on the original motion and discussion. And ask away, Mr. Hayes.
Couple questions, Mr. McCord. This gets approved, it's going to have to be a traffic study, correct?
It will have to be when the final master development plan is.
Okay, second thing, flood. We're not going to let anybody build in a flood plain, correct?
No, both. The master plan, that's being considered, the B option that Mr. Overton had mentioned, would exclude any development in that areas that had historic flooding.
Correct.
That was mentioned in the public hearing. The flood zone boundaries would also be excluded from any of the lots that are proposed with master plans, so the upland areas would be those areas reserved for the development.
Right. Third thing, do you remember, there was a development we did a couple years ago by the airport? Remember, we put in there, in those deeds or restrictions or whatever, that whoever developed that had to let them know that they were by the airport about the noise?
Right, right.
Can we do something similar to this and make sure that that's in there?
We could. We could actually add that to the final master development plan document as well, which is a zoning document, and we could include it on each of the plats.
Should that be an amendment at this point?
Do we need to add that as an amendment, too?
Would y'all just do that plan, or we need to do it as amendment? Because that's what we want to do.
Well, you certainly could add it to this zoning action, certainly.
I mean, if it makes it stronger, I'd like to see us do that. I mean, you know, it's...
You're making amendment to that?
You're making that, correct.
I'll make an amendment, yes.
Okay, so we have a second amendment on the table with the second by Councilman, a motion by Councilman Hayes, second by Councilman Alexander. Any discussion on this proposed amendment?
Can you add to that amendment, or does that need to be voted on first?
Well, I think, while we're discussing it potentially, yeah, I mean, if it's something that you think.
Sir. Yeah, well, I mean, that's a good thing that y'all are going to do. It's good. Number two, can you clarify once again, Jimmy or Bill, on that 20 acres?
That's not on this amendment, though, what we're talking about.
I know, but it's, but it's amending that pertains to the entire 20 acres, I believe.
You're talking about the additional buffer that they were setting aside?
Does that still remain industrial?
Yes, and they're, in that current, Mr. McCord, in that proposal that you guys are discussing, it remains industrial.
Correct.
The entire amount that is right now industrial would remain industrial.
Not the entire amount.
No, no, the 380-foot wide, roughly, a 380-foot wide area that is between the Hagueness property and the east boundary of the lots in this Plan B, which is, it's not 20 acres, it's probably more in the neighborhood of eight to 10 acres.
And nothing can be built in that 300-plus feet?
No, this, that would, that area would be excluded from the master plan, and it would retain its industrial zoning, and it could be developed for an industrial use.
The buffer's going to be a buffer, it's always going to remain a buffer, correct?
As I understand it, would you retain its industrial?
Well, I'm, I'm not talking about the, I'm not talking about what we're, what he's setting it back, 300 something.
I understand, I have some other questions. Okay, and thank you, I had to clarify. Yeah, let me just tell you my point, it's what, one I brought back, Andy, a couple of months ago.
Were you going to add something to his amendment?
Mm-hmm, I'm going to tell you why.
Okay.
Or at least something that, that should be, I think, on it. From, from the very first, first meeting that we had in committee, what, at least two months ago here or longer, my only concern, my main concern was that industrial, and houses being at that point in time, 30 to 50 feet of that industrial site. Now, we've amended it to be 300, which is much, much better. I think I also said in that meeting that that was one of the highest industrial general places of business that we have that produces a tremendous amount of heat, a lot of heat, through gas, natural gas that we do quite well, and we thank Hagueness for that, electricity, which we thank Hagueness for that. I had high school chemistry 46 years ago, teacher was Harvey Foster. I passed the class barely, but I passed. I remember in, in that chemistry class, we did discuss an element called hydrogen. As a matter of fact, one of our projects was to make a hydrogen generator in lab. Coach Foster told us to be very careful. It's been pretty common knowledge, I think, from, certainly our city officials and all, that behind that plant that helps produce that heat is hydrogen that is, I think, may be manufactured and stored back there. I don't know how much, but I'm going to guess it's quite a bit. It's been there from the get-go. And my main concern then, and it still is now, and probably was one of the reasons that the forefathers wanted all of that 20 acres to remain industrial, is to protect residents from that, the volatility of hydrogen, vis a vis a leak, a vis a vis whatever could, could possibly happen, and hopefully and prayerfully, nothing will happen. The residential side, I've always felt that this council has the wisdom, we could deal with that. We could provide appropriate residential housing on the remaining acreage. But my concern has been a house that people are in 24/7, or live in 24/7, in proximity to that material back there. And so that continues to be my concern. And I still hold to the platform that since the 20 acres is also, this is, this is one vote that, that is pertaining basically the entire project. It pertains to 20 acres as well as the residential that's already, it's all in the one. So you're either for it all, or if you're against it, have a problem with any part of it, then you have to go no on the whole project. And I don't have a prob, problem working with the developer on the resident, and the residents on the residential side. My concern's been 20 acres from the, from the very get-go, which I've made public here that, that night. I'm just elaborating a little bit more on it since then. So my concern is that, and even the 300-foot, so I'm certainly, I'm going to still vote no on the project, but as an addition to the notification that Craig brought, brought up, and he's true about the noise, those that live over there arounds that should be notified of what they're going to be living close to, and that would be that particular element. So that's the reason, that heaven forbid anything that would happen, I hope prayerfully nothing would. But if it passes, I want my name in the minutes, Connie, as voting no, because of what, of that. So anyway, if, I just think there's something else that may be.
So I think, Mr. Hayes, I think Mr. Mayberry is suggesting that you might add notification of potential, notification to potential residents of the existence of hydrogen on that site, and what that exposure could merit.
Yeah, that's fine, if there, if there is.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, so are you going to change your amendment to that?
Yeah.
Okay, and Mr. Alexander, are you okay with that?
My second is tired.
Your second is tired?
No, I said I seconded.
Okay, thank you, thank you. So now we have a slightly amended amendment, and is there any discussion on that? Okay, so let's go ahead and vote on that amendment. All in favor of making a restriction in this, that potential residents be notified of the existence of hydrogen on the property and the noise exposure, please say aye. Opposed, say no.
No.
Okay, so that passes.
I want to be sure that amendment gets settled.
Okay, so it's approved six to one with Ms. Love voting no. And so we will go back again to the original ordinance, or the second reading on the ordinance.
I thought we had another amendment that was voted on.
We, we voted on it earlier. We combined those two together, that's what your second was changing. And so we're back to the original second reading of the ordinance, but now has two amendments. Any further discussion on this? All right, this is then going to be second reading on ordinance 01711-95. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed, please say no.
No.
I have three against and four in favor. Correct me if I'm wrong. Identify Mr. Mayberry, Ms. Love, and Mr. Camp as being against, and other four council people being in favor. So it does pass with a vote of four to three. We move now to resolution, number, item number 18, which is resolution R1808-48, and for that, Councilman Fennell is recognized.
Thank you, ma'am. This is a resolution, amending Gallatin personal rules and regulations, drug and alcohol testing policy. I so move.
I have a motion by Councilman Fennell, a second by Councilman Alexander. Any discussion on this?
This is to make sure that we don't tolerate drugs in our workforce, and if they, somebody does, it's to get them to reach out for help.
Yeah, and it also actually expands our testing policy, so we test for a wider panel of drugs than what we've been using in the past. It does. Any other discussion? This is resolution R1808-48. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. It does pass unanimously. And that does conclude the regular agenda and brings us to the portion of the meeting where we discuss other business. Is there any other business from this council to come forward? Okay, I don't see anyone. Oh, Councilman Alexander.
I'm trying to think. Pastor Thomas was inquiring, Zach, you may be able to answer this question, about a sign down by St. Luke.
What kind of sign?
I think.
One he needed from the city?
Yeah.
Oh, you mean the, I bet he's inquiring about the sign for the name change?
Yes, yes.
So, remember, we changed the name of that. It used to be Blue, and we changed it to St. Luke Place.
What about the new church?
No, well, yeah.
The new addition, yes.
I'm, I'll check on, I'm not sure where we're at with it. We'll get it completely pretty soon.
Okay, we'll try and get it, you know, for the big day.
Thank you. Oh, hey, do you know when that is?
I don't.
They do have a celebration coming up, Mr. Wilkinson, so prior to that would be fabulous.
I'll give it to Zach and let you know for sure when that date is.
Okay. Any other, other business from this council? Okay, I do see Mr. Stewart at the podium.
Mr. Alexander, you asked me two weeks ago to check on that building behind the church that burned. There's been no action, no permit pulled, and we turned it over to Officer Jessica Jackson to go out and see if we could get some movement on it.
Do that piece of property sell?
Say again?
Has it sold?
No.
No. I mean, at this point.
Okay.
But, but, but it need to be cleaned up, something need to be done, because this is really, I saw.
We could force a clean up on it, again.
Okay, all right, thank you, Mr. Stewart.
Okay, thank you all. Any other, other business before we move on? Okay, we move now to public recognition on non-agenda-related items. This is the time of the... This is the time of the meeting, if anyone can come forward and discuss an item that's not on the agenda this evening, we would welcome you to do that at this time. We ask that you introduce yourself, give us your name and address. I see no one indicating may wish to speak, so I'll declare public recognition on non-agenda related items closed. And with that? Motion to adjourn, by Vice Mayor Overton, second by Councilman Alexander, all in favor, say aye. Okay, we are adjourned. Everyone have a lovely evening. I'd like to ask that the council and the department heads stick around for a miracle shirt picture, and then we will get out of here shortly after. Everyone have a lovely evening. Thank you for being here.